Welcome to the regular meeting of the Dambler City Commission for this Monday, July the 9th, 2018. The hour is 5:30. I will call us all to order and I will ask that we be led in prayer by Commissioner Terry.
Good afternoon. In lieu of prayer, I'd like to offer a moment of silence. Our Dambler schools have taken a hard hit the last couple of weeks, so I'd like to offer a moment of silence in memory of Amy Butler and Kristy Cook Blake Moore, who are both teachers with Dambler Schools.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Craig Butler, for a long time was the CPA auditor for the city of Dambler and Mr. Blake Moore is a fireman at the Dambler Fire Department. Let's stand, I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Commission, you have before you the agenda for the evening. Unless there are any additions, corrections, errors, omissions, I'll assume it meets your approval?
Yes.
Moving right along, we're in the section called "Hear the Public," where we offer the opportunity for the public to take the microphone and address any subject that is on tonight's agenda. Later on, there'll be an opportunity to address items that are not on tonight's agenda. Any takers? We'll move right along then. Item one is the approval of the benefits of the previous meetings, that being June the 18th, June the 20th, and June the 25th. Do I hear a motion to approve or amend?
Move to approve. Is present.
Thank Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Terry. Any discussion?
Madam Clerk, on the first meeting there, can you do something with Commissioner Atkins' name there? I'm kind of confused on what you have there.
Looked good to me.
Pretty mine. Oh, yeah. Is that right? Tim Atkins?
Tim Atkins.
Thank you.
Any further corrections or amendments? If none, I'll call a question on favor of the motion and say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item two is the banning request for the barbecue festival for this year, 2018. Hot Cindy. I don't think there's any, and Brad, I don't think there's any reason for you to take the microphone unless you just want to.
We're all good.
Staff's good with it?
Yes, sir.
All right.
This is the same banner that has been put up in previous years.
I presume it's the same banner with a new date on it and it will be hung for two weeks planned prior to the barbecue fest.
Tell us the dates.
What's the dates?
Why don't you come up and tell us what year you're in and give us the dates?
August 20th.
So it has it going up August 20th, coming down September 10th. It's usually what I believe to be three weeks.
And the event is?
Oh, I'm sorry. September 7th through 9th.
All right.
I move to approve the banner request.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second? And a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item three is code enforcement. Ms. Lester.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. You have the June code enforcement report in front of you. It's been a pretty busy month. We've issued 36 business licenses. We have placed nine liens for a total of $18,514 and we've recovered two in the amount of $642. We have demolished two properties, 702 Perkins and 222 Martin Luther King Boulevard. We have issued, we've had 166 complaints and had 41 violations. Three of the code enforcement staff attended the EBA conference in Lexington, June 28th and 29th, which was very good. So we got two full days of good information. 125 Betsy Ross, I've included the remediation report in that so you can see what they recommended to fix that problem, that sinkhole there. And we have issued 55 parking citations for this month. I'll be glad to entertain, answer any questions you might have.
I saw the boot on somebody today or yesterday.
Yes, we did have somebody today who had three unpaid parking tickets. So they paid their citations and we removed the boot. And it is three, not five. They thought that it was five. It's three.
Tough lesson learned.
I don't mean making a comment on your behalf for the work that your folks are doing. And I'm looking at some of these structure inspections, renovation inside and out in progress, property renovated inside and out in progress, structure and property in very good condition, close to complete renovation removal from condemnation list. So I think that what we wanted to do up here as a city commission is to embody you, to get after these folks and clean up. And I think in most cases, that's happening, so I'm pretty pleased about that personally.
Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Lester.
Yes, sir.
If I may, let's go back to the sinkhole. Why is that a jurisdiction of ours?
It's property maintenance. It was affecting the foundation of the house.
And who pays for that?
The property owner.
Okay. Ours is to make sure it gets resolved correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
I actually had, was contacted by a citizen about that property and passed it along to Bridgette. It has been taken care of very quickly.
Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am. Item four. Mr. Scott.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. My report tonight is perhaps a bit more lengthy than typically I present, but tonight I want to discuss in some length the adequacy of employee compensation as we begin the new year and changes that are in the works to address those issues. We had, of course, during the past several months, a lot of discussion on the budget and during that process, we did have some employee groups request or urge the commission to make greater changes than the 3% adjustments that I had recommended. I had recommended the 2% cost of living adjustment and 1% merit. And we were kind of close to the end of that budget preparation process when we had those discussions, but many of you commissioners did mention to me and discuss with me, it would be desirable if we could find ways to move our compensation package closer to benchmarks of the KLC Wage and Salary Survey. So the budget has been approved. It was approved with the 3% COLA, but it also appropriated money in each department for operations, for overtime, for maybe some reserve funds that we use for capital purchases and other needs. So in the days following, and really prior to and following the adoption of the budget, I did meet with our department heads, including our chief financial officer, and sought to implement some incremental change greater than the 3% that I'd earlier recommended if it was possible to do so within the approved budget. And I'm pleased really to report to you tonight, we believe that we have found a way to make some additional incremental change in employee compensation while we conduct the yet-to-be-conducted study of how our compensation compares with other cities that we deem to be comparable within the state. This gets probably into a little bit of unusual presentation because typically the city commission doesn't get deeply into personnel matters. It's the responsibility of the city manager under personnel policies to administer the budget. But to be clear to the commission, to our employees and to the community, I want to go into some detail tonight. And of course, this memo outlining this is available upon request and may be included possibly or probably in our webpage as well. So the opportunity, I think, is present within the approved budgets for us to make some additional compensation to employees that have been with us for some time, who have positions that they have occupied for a time, that are career employees, if you will, and have positions that are compared to those in the KLC Wage and Salary Survey. I went to some length to state all of this in a three-page memo that I'm trying to just verbally condense down, but in essence, the plan that I will implement within the approved budget is that I have already, in fact, compared the employees that are in their current position and compared those with the positions covered by the KLC Wage and Salary Survey. As we contemplate trying to get to the benchmark of 75% comparison with other employees in other cities, we have to recognize that employees don't start out at the top. They start at an entry level and progress through time to those levels of compensation based upon their experience in service. And so consistent with the request of our employee groups, that I look at that, I have and I've come up with a kind of a multi-pronged test to see if they qualify for getting a level of compensation beyond the potential of 2% COLA and 1% merit. And the framework for that is that it would be based upon their current rate of pay, which does not include overtime pay, based upon total years of service, based upon length of service in a comparable job position that is compared in the KLC Wage and Salary Survey, and they must have served in that position for a minimum period of three years. Now, our goal as personnel managers and as city officers is to attract and retain our most competitive employees. I mean, those that are dedicated to providing service and we want to be competitive in the pay to attract and retain them. And our whole philosophy in the state in terms of the retirement system is based upon the fact that you work for a period of time and then you're eligible for retirement. In our hazardous duty or our first responders cases, for example, that typically is 20 years. So in non-hazardous, that's typically 27, when you can retire with full benefit under the state retirement systems that we pay into and had to pay more into this year. The linear progression in hazardous duty, for example, is that if you're comparing compensation for someone and recognizing you don't start at the top but have to serve in a position to work your way up, logically, if you retire at 20 years, you would want to be at the 10-year, at 10 years, you'd want to be 50% of that benchmark. In 15 years, you'd want to be at 75% of that natural progression. At 20, you'd want to be paid equally to your peers in other positions. So in describing this, a little bit of a complicated process, I am looking at employees that have served for whatever period of time, if they have served long enough in the position and are underpaid by the benchmark comparison, instead of getting the 3% potential, they will get a dollar salary adjustment. In going through the various departments, it looks like, and I haven't done a finite count of those, but it looks like probably 60 to 70% would get the dollar adjustment and maybe 30% roughly would be subject to not having worked long enough or been in a position long enough to qualify for that comparability in salary with other cities. So I think that is, you know, maybe the great news that I'm sharing with you. It's going to result in some greater compensation going to employees. I think it's going to be well-deserved for those that have dedicated their lives to serving and we're recognizing this and it's your encouragement that I do so, so that we may show a good faith effort, I believe, in terms of paying a competitive wage as we complete the Wage and Salary Survey within this next fiscal year that, again, I hope to have completed in January, early in the development of next year's budget. I will say, you know, our 3% salary adjustment was going to cost about $232,000. In order to come up with this, these additional funds for the $1 and recognize that some people that might have earlier been in the 3% category will move out of that bucket into the $1 bucket, if you will. There were funds allocated for inclusion or for having a professional study done on wage and compensation. Instead of having that study done, I've allocated those funds to the salary increase of a dollar. And we're also looking for our own departmental managers to manage more frugally in terms of how they administer funds so that we're kind of squeezing the extra money out of the monies allocated in the present budget. We've had close budgets, not terribly close, but I mean, in the last number of years, we've had ending positive surplus positions. They have declined because of, our fund balance has declined over a number of years as a result of projects that are underway or continuing, and we've already talked about those being lower in the year ahead. I do think that within the funds you allocated, we can end on a positive note this next fiscal year, but it's, our budgets are not fat or with a great deal of surplus, so we will have to mind the store as we operate in this year, giving these additional levels of compensation. There's a lot of detail in the memo I shared with you and our employees. We'll be having meetings with their department heads and with our human resources director and with me to go over this, as well as to review in detail their individual benefits they receive from the city that we do every year in letter form, that list in complete detail all the healthcare, vacation, other benefits that they receive, and I'm very optimistic that they will view this in a very positive light. So unless you have questions, I won't go into greater detail. Maybe I've done an adequate job of hitting the high points of that, but it's going to result in some additional compensation being provided to those who have served in a position for three years or longer or somewhere along that retirement service career path of 10 or 15 years and are, in comparison, underpaid based upon their regular work hours.
Any questions?
I'll make a quick comment. So to clarify, those that are going to receive the dollar on the hour increase would be $2,000, $2,080 raise per year.
That's a pretty good raise.
Nice raise, yeah.
And that will cover approximately 60% of all employees?
60 or more. I haven't done a finite count on that, but I think it's 60 to 70%, yes.
On average, would that dollar raise be equivalent to a 5%, 7%, 8% on average?
It's probably beyond 5. I'd say maybe 5 and 1/2 to 6%. It depends, you know.
So they'll get that plus the 3?
No, it's not stacked on top of the 3. I mean, you're going beyond the 3 to get the dollar.
So it looks like one of the keys in this plan, in order to make our budget stay as close as possible, is the better utilization of overtime.
Yes.
So how, that's a little bit like betting on the come, if you will.
Somewhat.
So how do we, how do we monitor that? How do we manage that?
Well, we're having discussions with our departments that use overtime. It is a bit of a management art and it's not fully controllable when adverse conditions occur, so it's not a completely controllable outcome, but it's a desired outcome to use it if you need it, but don't use it if you don't.
How will this, and you may have covered this, how would this be thoroughly disseminated amongst everybody so that, so that they can hopefully appreciate what you've done?
Well, I think it's what we all have done, but again, I think there will be the department head meetings with their employees and they will go over it at that point and using this memo and perhaps some additional information. They will have individual meetings, I believe, with the human resources director and possibly also with me, depending upon when those are held. So we hope to have a little bit of a personal FaceTime conversation with employees because we do value our employees. We invest a lot in them. By department, some employees get a lot more additional equipment paid for them, for example, than others, but we do that with virtually all employees for safety gear and provide vehicles, you know. We provide particularly vacation visual.
And I understand that you're going to be posting those on the city's webpage. Will that include those items like equipment?
Well, I didn't, I didn't get into that, but I think you raised the point. I think it's, it's, all salary information is open records.
Right.
It's subject to open record requests for any employee in any city, any government, county or city. And a number of cities go ahead, as a matter of transparency, they post by position the compensation that the employee receives, and I think that is a good idea to do and I'm committed to doing that from my salary all the way down. And we'll, I don't know if we will by employee post the additional benefits provided or not, but maybe a footnote for a group of employees or something, but I think it can serve as a recruitment tool if people can see what we offer employee positions and what they pay. So we intend to, I intend to post those, that information online.
Are you saying you're going to publish these, this information by positions or by?
By positions.
Oh, okay.
And once it is done, you can go to Louisville or Lexington, you can ask any city, for any city employee position, you know, city manager on down and pull up what their compensation is.
Yeah, I'm okay with it by position. I just, as I read the memo, I just made some notes to bring up tonight and that was one of them, that it looks as if we were saying we're going to do all employee salaries on the city's webpage.
Well, not by name, but by position.
Understood. Thanks for clarifying.
Okay.
And this is great. I like what you've done. I like what we've done because it's been that ongoing conversation. And I think it's important that we stress to the employees that this is just a start of a more direct focus, more focused on employee salaries as well as benefits, so.
Did I understand somewhere in this, as you have looked, that there may actually be some positions that get a reduction? Did I, did I understand that?
No, I don't think any, any employee, no employee will suffer a reduction as a result of this COLA or this $1 or COLA adjustment. However, and I will say this, although if any wage and salary survey is conducted for any organization, you try to determine the job duties, the appropriate skills for that position and the competitive salary range for a position. You know, no position is totally open-ended, so you have to have an appropriate range. And at some point in a long, very long-tenured employee's case, you may approach, you may bump up against the ceiling of that legitimate range. So I don't think there will be cuts, but there may just be at some point the recognition that we're paying competitively, we're paying all we can or should, and that employees won't get a raise in the future. They might get a cost of living adjustment, which is not considered a raise.
That's right.
But, you know, we, the city commission and I, we did in 2015, we hired Lyle Hannah and Associates to do a wage and salary survey at that time, comparing us with both cities and industry. And I will say that 2015 salary survey found that we were not really competitive in some positions. We made, as you might recall, $100,000 or so in salary adjustments to bring people up at that time. And so this is not the first attempt that we've tried to do that. It's an ongoing attempt and the ball keeps moving because people with skills, you know, if they're not tied to a community, they go maximize their opportunities and we can understand that.
That KLC benchmark, that 75%, are you finding that we have city employees who are already near or at the 75th percentile?
I would say not many. Some, some are. Those might be closer to either the department heads or the city manager. It doesn't, it doesn't fall beyond that though typically, although there might be one or two of those too. But generally, we're not overpaid as city employees here, I would say.
Yes.
Some are paid more competitively. You know, my salary is probably at, pretty close to the 75% percentile range. Maybe one or two others, but most are not.
But you're referring to non-management?
Yes.
People in this? This does not include department heads or management? This is strictly the hourly employees?
This is the hourly employees. Within the salaries, within the personnel policy and with the funds allocated, I do have the discretion to make some adjustments for department heads and I intend to make some adjustments for department heads in recognition of where they may be, far below or close to that 75 percentile within the ability of money available.
There's a line in here that I'd like to read for the public because I think it summarizes, "It's our collective goal to have employees paid competitively and for them to fully understand the package to be provided in this fiscal year 1819. Our further goal is to have 0% turnover in the year ahead or as close to that as may be possible to achieve." I'm good with that.
Yeah. Lovely. Good.
All right. Anything else, sir?
No, sir. I just wanted to share that with you, which I think is a step forward. We're going to begin that study and we'll be having these conversations probably in January, February again.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are in that section called "Hear the Public," and before I open it up to the public, I always like to recognize other elected officials that have joined us. Representative Daniel Elliott is gracing us with his presence this evening. Representative, is there anything you'd like, anything particular on your mind?
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Please take the microphone.
Well, thank you for the introduction. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and to watch another elective body work its will, and I appreciate each of you and your service to our community. I know it's not easy to always serve in an elective office, so you have my appreciation for your service and I appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. Our, our job amongst five of us is pretty easy compared to the herding of cats that you have to do in Frankfurt.
Daniel and I have discussed that a few times.
All right. We're in the section of "Hear the Public." It's the public's opportunity to address the commission. Yes, ma'am. Please go ahead.
I'd like to thank the commission and the mayor and the city staff for hearing me. It's a question about wayfinding signs. The last meeting with Mr. Carmen, the consultant on wayfinding, I think was maybe the very end of January. And at that time, he said that within a couple of days, he would get the plan to you. And I think I understood that it was then going to the commission for approval. And as I understand it, it hasn't come back to you or, and I wanted to clarify that too. Is it coming back to you and going to the commission for approval or do I have that wrong?
It was not the end of January, but it might have been the end of May or the last meeting of Mr. Carmen on wayfinding was not in January, but there were meetings after that. But nevertheless.
I'll check my calendar again.
Nevertheless, I have not received the final report. I anticipated receiving it in the month of July. It should be about done and be ready for presentation either to or through me or to the city commission. But I have no editorial, you know, intent with the report. It's just a processing to me, to the city commission.
So, it goes to them?
Yes.
For them to, okay.
It should be imminent.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Yes, Ron Deverick. There was an article in the May 12th issue of the Advocate Messenger talking about the paving that was done in the city this year. And it talked about the city paying $63.60 a ton for an estimated 3,006 tons of asphalt and that the city was getting that asphalt at the state price contract minus 5%, which sounded like a pretty good deal. And it kind of surprised me that you weren't going out for bids on that. And I asked Michelle and she said, yeah, that it was a state price contract and so on. But it's water under the bridge for the city. But I just thought that you would be interested to note that since you did get it from the Allen Company, that was on May the 12th that the article ran, but on April the 28th, the bid sheet for the county, they got the same asphalt from the Allen Company for $56.75. So, there's another $7 a ton that they were able to shave off the price, which is about another 5%. So, you could have got another $21,000 worth of roadwork done. So, they gave you a deal, but they gave you the shaft at the same time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Going once, going twice. We are now in commissioners' comments. Floor is yours, commission.
Sure. I always get to kick it off, huh? So, last meeting, we decided to go on with another six months of the ad hoc committee for Parks and Rec. And so, we had a meeting today and just briefly, there was money left over that both the city and county did not spend from last year's budget, which was a total of $40,000, $20,000 from each government. And so, as we stated last time, the reason we wanted to continue on with the ad hoc committee is for unfinished business. So, that money's going to go into paving and hopefully we'll get a good price on that. But there's some trail damage back by the maintenance shed and the new volleyball court does not have a parking lot and the road to the maintenance shed will be included in that. And it should come under $40,000, but that's what happened today at ad hoc. So, I thought I'd bring you up to speed on that. Oh, the county's going to bid that, Ron, so maybe we'll get a good deal.
Yours truly here had the pleasure of presenting a proclamation in the key to the city to Evan French Mastin, who is the longtime principal actor at Pioneer Playhouse after 25 years. He's decided that he needs to spend more time with family. And you've heard the term "being moved to tears." He was. Now, he's a good actor, you can say what you want to about that, but he really did appreciate Anything else? Okay, then we will move on to item five and that'd be the payment of the bills which you have in front of you.
I move for payment of the bills as presented in the amount of $762,970.73.
Next, Commissioner Cottle, second.
Second.
Commissioner Atkins, discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item six is Resolution Number 2018-07-09-01, and this is the surplus list that has been approved.
I move we approve Resolution 2018-07-09-01.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Pretty benign. And how are these disposed of ultimately?
We join the EGUB group, it's sort of like an eBay, and we're going to put all of them out there with pictures and hopefully make some money versus our in-house auction. And these items, most of these were donated to us by P&amp;Z, so.
Just for the record, it's mostly office equipment and old meters.
And this is that new format. The law was changed to allow the online auctioning of surplus property. And I think Donna had some good information about that last time that we didn't get to share with you, but this might be a good opportunity. Something to the effect of, was it 60 or 70% of Kentucky cities?
Right.
Participate in the disposal of their property through this online process. And the amount of assets sold by EGUB for Kentucky municipalities was, I mean, in the millions.
It was.
Last year. So, it was pretty remarkable.
There's a chance, if you all want to, to pick up some old water meters, so you might want to look for those.
Make great Christmas ornaments, don't you?
Boat anchors.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item seven is Resolution 2018-07-09-02. This is the Employee Assistance Program renewal for fiscal year 2018, 2019.
I'll offer motion to approve Resolution 2018-07-09-02 as presented.
We have a motion to hear a second.
Second.
Second. Discussion?
Yeah, I was a little disappointed when I saw it was just for full-time employees. I was going to invite the rest of the commission to join me, but we're not eligible.
Do you need some assistance?
Yes.
What, Donna might want to just tell everybody what that is?
Yeah.
The Employee Assistance Program is a program that we, the city pays for as a benefit to the employees that if they ever need counseling or any of their family members need counseling for drugs, alcohol, just depression, or if like the police officers or firefighters are dealing with the grief situation of someone passing away or that they can call it, it's an 800 number. It's very private and it's a good service. We also use it if we have internal problems with drug use or we send them for referrals to different places. They can have counseling of all sorts. Children can call in and they have, so it's a very private service, but it's a good service.
And it went down.
It went down. It was $1.95 per person, per employee, per month. Now, it's $1.85, so.
So, this will be one of those footnotes, I assume, Mr. Scott, in describing total compensation.
Madam Clerk, what would you, do you have any idea how many folks you actually use that service?
It's not utilized a lot, maybe in a quarter, maybe five employees, but I guess it could be a family member, so I'm not sure. They don't really identify, which we don't want them to, which one it is, but probably five employees. And we've, you know, we may use it, hopefully we don't have to use it many times on the other side, but we may use it five times a year for an internal counseling or something.
Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item eight is the Resolution 2018-07-09-03. This is the HDR Contract Amendment Number Five. Normally, I think Earl would talk about that, but I believe he is on his way back from Nashville or still in Nashville.
He is still away, had a conference in Nashville, so I'll be happy to review that with the city commission.
Please do.
This attached contract amendment for HDR is to include the final design and resident inspection services for the Paraville Road Corporate Drive Water System Improvements Phase Two. Because we had contingency funds left over from our water treatment improvement plant project, we were able basically to extend the project that we originally contemplated out at the industrial park into two additional phases. And they were, they're broken into two additional projects due to eligibility requirements under the U.S. Department of Agriculture Rural Development. The color map that is in your map, or in your packet rather, from HDR shows the two phases of provision for engineering and construction services, supervisory service to install a new proposed 12-inch water main extension that begins at the Daveco Drive area on US 127 and terminates in the connection on Lebanon Road right along the bypass there. And there's a spur off of that, a 10-inch water main extension that will go over to the existing Dino property to improve water flow in there. And the other Phase Two extension is to, because we have available funds to do so, we can use those matching federal dollars to extend our water line down Paraville Road. I think we estimate almost to where our standpipe or our water tower will be down Paraville Road. So, those are great things to be able to have, to the ability financially to do that type of work and to improve the water flow out in that area and make that loop to give industry a greater opportunity to benefit and to expand in those areas. The details for the contract amendments follow the map and it is for both the, it details both the additional services in terms of the design services for the two phases on Corporate Drive Water Main as well as the Paraville Road Water Main and then the cost associated with those services. We are saving on bidding unless it's required to be bid and there'd be another $12,000 or $13,000 fees if U.S. Department of Agriculture Rural Development requires that we bid for those, but they may not be required to be bid. And this was a, of course, previously bid by HDR when we did our water planning system improvements. So, that's what's, before you denied, it's recommended that you do pass the resolution.
Mr. Scott, is your microphone on?
It is, but I may not be speaking enough.
So, the total amount is?
Well, the total amount is in the contract, Exhibit J, which details those. It's maybe not totaled at that point. You can see the fee calculation on the following page of Exhibit J, the third page, which totals $90,000 for Corporate Drive and $150,910 for Paraville Road. Technically, I guess the total amount on Corporate Drive is $90,863 and the total amount on Paraville Road is $150,910.
Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, chair will call the question. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Another example of City of Danville promoting economic development through.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. We don't have any records of a motion or a second on that.
I move for approval of Resolution 2017-07-09-03.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Commissioner Atkins, seconded. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Thank you, sir.
Does that satisfy you?
Yes.
There you go. Item nine is the Second Reading of Ordinance Number 1916. Madam Clerk, I'll ask you to read that, please.
This is the Second Reading of Ordinance 1916, an ordinance amending CDO 2-96 pertaining to the Classification Plan, Compensation Plan, and Policies and Procedures for City Personnel.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve Ordinance Number 1916.
Thank you. Commissioner Terry, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sears. Any further discussion, comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Roll call.
Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Atkins?
I got the first part, right.
Yes.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Sears?
Yes.
Second reading of Ordinance Number 1917, alcohol regulatory fee. Donna, you want to read that one?
Yes, it's the Second Reading of Ordinance 1917, an ordinance establishing the regulatory fee, license fee for the sale of alcoholic beverages in the City of Danville for fiscal year 2018, 2019.
Is there a motion?
I move we approve the Second Reading of Ordinance Number 1917.
So, there's a second.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion?
Once again, this is unchanged, just going through the motions.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Sears?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Item 11 is the Second Reading of Ordinance Number 1918, and this is in regard to changes to the parking ordinance. Madam Clerk, will you read that, please?
The Second Reading of Ordinance 1918, an ordinance amending City of Danville, Kentucky Code of Ordinance, Section 17-33, Section 17-38, and Section 17-172D, requiring the display of parking permits in areas designated as permit only parking.
Move for approval, Second Reading of Ordinance 1918.
Motion, Commissioner Cottle, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Terry. I have a question. I want to make sure that we all in the public are aware of what this contains. Mr. Dexter?
Happy to review it. If you'd like for me to?
Well, only those things that I think we are changing.
So, the first change is in Section Two on Page Two, clarifies that you must not only possess but also display a valid permit issued by the city in any parking area that requires a valid permit. And in the next section, it changes the fees associated with what used to be improper parking in an area that was permit only was a $30 fine. It now reads "Failure to display permit if parked in permit only space." It still remains at $30. However, the fine is reduced to $15 if proof of permit is shown. And that mirrors the language that has been in place for handicapped parking or improper parking in a handicapped spot. Those are the two changes.
Thank you for that clarification, sir. Any additions, comments, corrections? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of the, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Sears?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Is there a reason for executive session?
Yes, sir, we have need for an executive session to discuss personnel matters. We have need for an executive session to discuss personnel matters.
Okay.
I move we go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter pursuant to KRS 61-801F.
Do I hear a motion? We got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Just got a second.
Motion by, second by Commissioner Seres. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. We're in executive session. We have a motion and a second to return to regular session. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. We're in regular session. Madam Clerk?
Staff would ask that you promote Will Ellis to the position of Fire Lieutenant, and then also allow the fire department to keep a hold list or a promotion list active for the next six months as presented. So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Anything else to come before us, commission, staff? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made, second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. We are adjourned.